All right, it's 6:30 and we'll call the meeting to order and do the pledge of allegiance, please.
The pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for everybody being here. Lacey, could you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Councilmember O'Reagan.
There.
Councilmember Hutchinson.
Here.
Mayor Yoder is absent, so Acting Mayor Johnson.
Here. Thank you.
Any additions or deletions, anybody, to the agenda?
I have one addition, to add a new department policy for the thermal imaging camera.
That'll be under police?
Be under the police, yes. Number three.
All right, is there a motion at all for the claims A through F? Some... Second?
I'll second that.
Can I just confirm that was for the consent agenda? The whole consent agenda, okay.
I'm all set.
Oh, okay.
We just need a vote on that motion.
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Got mixed up there. And then, the summary of May 13th, closed meeting for evaluation of Bruce Brotherton. And beginning performance evaluation. Performance was determined to be highly satisfactory, receiving 52.4 out of 56 points. Good job, Bruce. Thank you. Number seven, the agenda request, Rob and Lori, your head of the floor.
Is there a place that you would like me to speak from?
If you could stand up, yeah.
Go in this, it's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, the reason why I'm in here tonight, if anybody doesn't know me, it's Rob Simpson. I had been given a trespass notice form and in this letter to me, besides some of the misstatements that were pointed out to me by some of the Congress family, it's neither here nor there, but is stated that the, it was decided unanimously by the city council to issue me, a permanent trespass order barring me from being on the property of the Larry Congress Park, which is the Ernie Congress Park, located at 281 Bolio Street, West Mott, Minnesota. I'm just looking at this form and I just wanted to clarify with council that they feel that that would be legitimate punishment for the crime of tampering with the cameras. I was approached by Officer Borash and he asked me about that incident. And I told him straight up, yes, I had. Was I gonna lie to him? There was no reason for me to lie to him. One of the things that I was trying to do, and I informed him to yet, is I knew that the cameras were placed incorrectly. I work with cameras at work, between probing with your laser and just regular cameras. So, I was not trying to do any harm, and I informed him of that also. In the past, you guys know that I've worked with multiple people between the dedicated funding for the Motley City Parks, as part of that, and as part of the council. I helped start the Parks Commission, which Bruce and I worked very hard on getting that put together. I helped obtain the silhouettes for the dog park. I helped rearrange and create structure at the Ernie Congress Park. And my children, and the neighborhood children, I helped them going to the park and cleaning that park. In the same time, I have responded, being a, that was one of the things I was going to give you guys, is I have first responder, AED, CPR, training, and I've used that many times in the past five years in that park. Some of those occurrences are, one child biting through their tongue, requiring stitches. Two times, there was concussions over at the park, and I helped out with those. One compound fracture of an arm requiring hospitalization, I helped out with that. There was broken glass left in the park, causing a foot lacerations and that and itself requiring stitches. I helped out with that. Multiple contusions, hands, legs, arms, face, multiple knee stings. And, I've also helped out at other football games and other places, other than that park. I'm not saying what I did was correct. What I am saying is, I do not believe that if the council made that judgment to bar me from that park for life, that you made the correct decision. I'm 52 years old, I don't go over there and play, I don't use the park. I go over there and I help children.
I think one question that we probably all have, how do you know that the cameras weren't positioned properly?
By looking at them. I, like I stated, I use laser guided equipment at work. They have to be pointed correctly, or else they will not work. We also have cameras there.
Well, I think we, in all fairness, we have, I know a couple of us have seen the video on the screen, and they are positioned exactly the way they're supposed to be.
I also can make statement that the one camera has been moved since I moved it, it got moved back and then it got moved again, so it's not even in the same location as what it is now. My statement is, and I do admit culpability, that I should not have messed with the cameras. But I'm not being punished in this. Truthfully, if I don't go back to the park again, if I don't render aid in that park again, it's not going to be hurting me any. It hurts the park and it hurts the children.
I think one question that I will answer, and I'll open this up for the rest of the council if they wish, is what would you do if one of the city employees went over to your home and moved the cameras because we thought they weren't positioned properly?
That is a statement that was made by Officer Borash here. And I kind of smiled because he was threatening me at the time. And when he made that statement, I smiled, I told him, I said, "It's kind of humorous." And he asked me why, and I said, "Because you're threatening me, the prosecution, and now you're saying that you're gonna come over to my house and do that same thing." That was what I told your officer. If you guys want to climb up to the second story where I got cameras, I guess you're gonna do that.
I'd say, what would, how would you react?
I would have to go back up there and I'd have to test them again. It's not like I would.
I think one thing that turned the whole council off was walking over and, you know, flipping off your finger to basically everybody, that kind of set the tone for, you know, not positioning the cameras properly, like you say. That, totally uncalled for. All the things you were saying on the Facebook are really absurd.
Not absurd.
Pointing, pointing the camera in certain places that you thought was...
I did not make that statement. No, you're incorrect, I did not make that statement at all. Lori, can you clarify that?
I'm the one that made that statement. Because my daughter came to me concerned. Would you like to ask her?
No, I don't. Is there any opinions or comments to council?
Well, I guess I could add to it, so I was gone at the last council meeting when they made the decision. But Rob, what I find pretty interesting is the fact that you, you say you care so much about the park, and we're putting the cameras out to stop the vandalism and maybe some of the theft and the problems we've had. So you know how important they are, and I really feel that if you had a problem with the cameras or thought we could do better, that you should come to the city, and I know you...
I agree.
You may not like Jason, and that maybe so, but I mean, there's others here that could have worked with you.
I agree, and that's what I'm saying, I was wrong in that respect. I completely take that blend.
Yeah, and as Steve said, seeing you put your middle finger up to the cameras in what I think is kind of a malicious fashion, maybe that's not the right word, but it changed my whole outlook on you doing that. To me, that wasn't the fact that you didn't care about the city. You were doing it because of the fact that they were there, in my opinion?
That was right after I had heard from my daughter, my wife. I acted out of instinct, and instinct was wrong. And I will, I've said that, and I will say that again. But as in protecting my family, protecting children, you're damn right.
And I get it, you know, I have, I have kids, I know where you're coming from, but you know, if, if your daughter felt threatened, I mean, you should have called us and said, "Hey, I'm really concerned. I want to see what's that camera's looking at," or...
I agree.
You, the way you went about it was not, not right.
I agree.
When we're just trying to make the city better and the park better.
I agree, and that's why I'm here, and I, I am not disagreeing with Anna. And that's exactly what I told the officer too.
Is, in your mind, is it two different things when you say you shouldn't have done it? And I haven't heard, "I'm sorry I did it," or... In your mind, are they one in the same, or are they different?
I, I do believe they are one in the same, but then, I will say straight out, I apologize if you feel they're differently because I am sorry that I moved the camera. There's no doubt about that, I wouldn't be here tonight if I didn't have concern. Like I stated, to me, what you're doing is you're legally absolving me of having to go over there with my training if a kid is hurt. Jase showed up at the house next door to me, a while back, when there was an attempted suicide. I was there, that's what my training spoke and required of me.
Well, I think we have, council, two ways we could approach this, we could table it and discuss it when we're all together, or if somebody wants to make a change to that, go ahead and...
Well, if nothing else, then maybe we can just re-take a, take a month, we'll think about it and revisit it back when, when we're all available to be here.
What do you feel, Pat?
I would like Al here, before making decisions, me, but what I would ask, Rob, your letter to the editor.
That was the same thing that was published in Facebook.
I don't cook on Facebook, so...
Yeah, I understand.
I have nothing to do with that. I read the one in the paper. Would you be open to writing a letter to the editor, correcting all that?
Well, in...
And apologizing publicly?
In that letter, I tried to make that apology, if the whole thing in Facebook would have been published, that would have been seen. I can do that, there's certain points in that, that I still ring true to. I don't understand why, as council members, you felt the need to take that action before coming to me and asking me, why the hell I would act so despicably if that's how you felt.
Well, I think the problem, not the problem, I think the difference is you should have come to the city, not the other way around.
I did not, I did not know anything about this.
We had no clue that you were upset about anything. But if you had a problem, you should have come to the city.
And I understand that, but then, what I'm speaking of is the action, and that's what I spoke of in the letter, is the action that was taken without the council. I mean, you're waiting to take action tonight because you want Al to be here today, full council, to be able to talk about this.
I think we are fully capable of making a decision if we want to without Al. That's not a problem.
And, and I'm sorry, Steve, if I'm not trying to be degrading whatsoever, and I hope I'm not coming across that way.
I think after listening to our council, what we'll do is table it, see if there's, this isn't either make a decision changing thing, but see if you write something publicly in the paper, just so four or five people don't hear it, where everybody hears it. And I think we'll table it for, till the next council meeting.
As I stated, if I may... I don't want to jump?
No.
Okay, if I may, the statement that I made was pertaining to me receiving this in the mail, not having any idea that council was even planning on or talking about taking action before hearing from me, at all. That's what the letter to the editor pertains to in the paper.
Well, I think you have to reread the letter, but I think what we'll do is table it, see what happens. No more than one month, a decision will be made, I'm sorry, decision will be made at the next council meeting. Is that good?
You and I are gonna have to talk at the meeting, because I'm out in front of my offices anyway.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Because that would be too close to that apartment.
Did Jason have anything to say before we move on?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Is everybody comfortable with that? Hold on here. Thank you, Rob and family, for showing up and... Planning and zoning, Pat?
Yeah, we have a recommendation, the planners always recommending a variance application be approved with a public hearing, and if it's in the packet, we'll take action on it later in the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it then?
Okay, that's all I got?
Yeah.
Nothing from the building department? Okay. Fire department, Brad?
Calls for me were ten medicals, two motor vehicle accidents, and two fires, so I pulled 14 calls in. And number two, I'm seeking approval to advertise additional firefighters.
I don't think we need a motion for that? Do we?
No, not really to advertise, if we get to the hiring point, we'd make a motion about it.
Okay.
As long as nobody sees an issue with it.
Go for it.
And then with that, I guess I would just make sure that the hiring committee will remain the same with Steve, myself, and the officers. Change that.
Any comments, concerns, or anything else for the fire department?
I guess I have one question for you. With the parade season kind of coming up, do you guys have a plan on what parades you're gonna attend, or...
Drew says the only thing I have for right now.
Okay.
Um, and one's, uh, one's the weird. It's usually the same weekend as the fair, isn't it?
That's next year, yeah. The fair is coming.
Yeah.
Do we have a driver for June Fest, for one or two trucks?
Yes.
Okay.
And Pilar and Scandia Valley have been invited.
I've got an old car, so drive behind me in case I need him.
Need to push to the side.
Anything else, Brad?
Nope, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Police department, Jason?
Okay, month of April, we had 135 calls, bringing us up to a total of 543 this year so far. Put in 37 and a half hours at the school, which brought us over our limit that we needed for the annual contract with the school. So that contract was filled in complete, or filled completely. Any other questions on the report? Next would be the Motley Police Department Thermal Imaging Camera Policy. At the last meeting, you guys approved for me to order the clear camera for the squad car. It's on order, it's supposed to be in this week, and hopefully installed at the end of the week. You guys did recommend a policy put in place as well, so I did some research and nobody, hardly anybody, has a policy on it, but I did find a couple other parts of the country and kind of mirrored imaged off of theirs. Tweaking it as needed for our department. So that's where it came from. So just looking for approval to add that to the PD policy book.
I don't make a motion to accept the Thermal Imaging Camera Policy.
Second. Any more discussion, Al?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And that's all I have for this month.
Thank you. Public works, Bruce?
All right, page 28, my report. They know Ad Underwater has talked to the tower painter today, he's been mobilizing a few things in, he plans to be moving in this week. Our pressure tanks are gonna be here about the 20th, 21st, something like that, and tower will probably go offline about the 25th, but according to the schedule it looks like right now, and it should be done, or it should be blasting the inside of it by July 15th and that kind of stuff, so there should be some progress happening. Verizon just got back to me today now, and they're still looking to see if they want to get those things welded on ahead of time, but I told them they got until about the 15th, they're gonna run out of time, so... But, that's about that, all I got for that update on this right now.
Real quick, I just want to say, they still don't have a planned start date, and we haven't heard that they're ever gonna put the cell tower on there, the cell antenna on there.
For Verizon?
But this is in preparation for, hopefully that they do.
Yes. Okay. Oh, wastewater, same thing. Streets of Parks, we got a couple thousand grants for the, towards the pavilion project, and 2,000 towards tennis court lighting and stuff. And we got the pad board for the waste oil station, so they can bring that in anytime now. Any questions on that stuff? Moving on, there's a new grant period opening up, July 1st, with the Sourcewell Small Projects Partnership and stuff. And I'm curious if it'd be all right to apply for the 2,500 towards, say, the tennis court lighting on that project, it's once a year thing. So I'm looking for approval, I guess, to chase after that one.
Bruce, is this the one that can be shared between departments, or is this just for yours?
It could be, yeah.
Okay.
I think you...
Because you used it last year, right?
I just used it for the thermal camera, but their fiscal year ends June 30th.
June, yeah, yeah.
And you used it last year for the radar cam, for the radar scans.
Okay, okay.
Is there a motion for approval?
I would make that motion.
Is that connected?
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Next on the agenda, frequency drive at the water plant went out, another one. It's probably gonna be another 1,500 bucks, but it's ordered, I didn't have a choice, so I thought I'd give you a heads up that it's gonna be coming through. The engineer is still incisive, that everything is sized right, and the contractors are all satisfied, right? So why we've had two of them go, I have no idea yet. Nobody's, they're supposed to be looking into it deeper, but nobody's come up with any reason yet, but... So, but we do need to get the thing going, so... More of an informational, I guess. Next on the list is a vacation request, like the 12th to 22nd. I do realize this tower thing is kind of getting into that same time period, we should have time to try things for a couple weeks, if it looks like it's gonna be an issue, I'll change it. But right now, tentatively, that's where I'm, scheduled for that. And if it, if it looks like it ain't gonna be a good time, I'll, I'll change my mind on that, but...
I'll make a motion to accept your vacation request.
I'll second that. We'll trust your judgment on the timing of it.
Yeah. I'm probably just more concerned than you are about that.
You'll stay within 50 miles of town, right?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye for vacation?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And I believe that's all I have right now. Unless you have something to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Administration department?
On page 29, you'll find the water usage report. Looks a little bit different this month, as you all know, we, the water and sewer restructuring occurred on this bill cycle. So there's fewer categories on this spreadsheet now. But you can see we're at 6%, so we're right in, still in the good range of the unaccounted for water. Anybody have any questions about that, or about the water and sewer rate restructuring?
Have you had any residents concerned or questioning it or anything?
The only ones who have really questioned it are the flat sewer customers, where it went from $30 to $35 a month. That is pretty much the biggest increase that any one person would see. So, not too surprised about that, but once they hear that rates haven't changed in 10 years...
Most people understand.
They sort of get it. Darcy and I were actually surprised, we had no kinks, we got everything worked out on the front end, as far as we know, all the bills were accurate. And Morrie's did question the fact that it looked different, but we haven't heard back from them about the small increase or anything, so, so far, so good. On page 30, I just have sort of an update on the grants. A few community members have mentioned that they think we should be going for more grants, et cetera, so I just wanted to give you guys sort of an update of where we're at. On the very bottom, you'll see that we have two outstanding grants that we, the deadline hasn't passed, we haven't found out if we received anything for those. Does anybody have questions on any of those?
Now, these are the ones we've received, correct, the ones received?
This is all, I've included the ones that we didn't get as well.
So those are the ones with the zeros?
Correct. Yep, and then the childcare shortage solutions grant, the $10,000, we're not actually holding that money here. It was applied as a joint application, and the Staples EDA is holding the funds for that, I believe.
So now, would that be for new residents who start daycares and different facilities?
We have a task force, I think I sent you something a few months ago. I teamed up with representatives from Staples, from the school... I teamed up with representatives from Staples, from the school district and Lakewood, I think, was there. CLC was in the initial meeting and we applied for a ten thousand dollar grant through the Initiative Foundation, basically to start looking into childcare solutions for the shortage in our area. The Initiative Foundation teamed us up with Todd County because they only had so many grants to give out. It looks like they might have gotten some additional funding so we can break away from them again. Their challenges are a little bit different than our area. Um, so we've had one initial meeting so far. Um, and we're sort of still rolling on that and trying to see what we can do to get more childcare in the area so our employers can get employees to come to the area.
So, so if somebody were interested in doing this, say somebody thought about opening up a daycare, just because I know the paper's here, would that be something they would come to you to get more information on or?
Um, right now-
Or you guys not in that process yet?
We're not really there yet. We don't know what exactly, the ten thousand right now is just sort of for us to figure out what the plan is, whether it's recruiting more, um, in-home daycares or a center-based daycare. Um, we haven't really gotten to that part. But I would encourage them to contact Sourcewell if they're interested in daycare because they've also been working on this. It's sort of a region-wide issue.
Okay, okay.
And there may be some incentives available for new providers.
Yeah. And I just wanted to make sure that we kind of got it out there in the paper.
It's definitely not a new problem. It's just gotten a lot worse in the last couple of years. Um, any questions about any of the other grants?
Just for, um, like the zero here, why, why do you think we are turned down? Is there reasons or?
Um, First International Bank, that grant was, um, I think every agency that got a grant was from North Dakota. I don't know how that all works out, but I know that Staples did put in an application as well for the Dower Lake Project and I think there were roughly seventy entrants for that and I think there were five two thousand dollar grants given out. There was another portion that was a thousand dollar grant. You could have voted online. Sort of dropped the ball on that, but I don't think there was any way we were gonna get that, especially with, maybe if there was one in the whole region, but with Staples putting one in as well, I don't think there's, we had any chance at getting enough for that. And then the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Grant, I do not know why we didn't get that one. But that's something that Brad and I have talked about. There's a couple, there's a federal grant for that as well. And I think they're gonna, we're gonna look at that one this year. Or I think they have the same grant opening again this year through the state that we might try for again. Think it's a pretty good percentage of grants. Granted, some of these are Staples, Motley, Community Foundation, which is pretty simple to get, but we're getting something anyway.